I'm calling a meeting to order. I've got one after four. Uh, thank you all for joining us. It's good to see all of you. Um, I just have to, I'm supposed to remind you to speak or state your name clearly uh each time you speak. Uh, when you're in the meeting, it's best to mute yourself. I usually do it with a space bar only because of your dog walks or whatever. It's confusing. It was just a six of us. It should be okay. Uh, if anybody is hearing in there, you can click the order. Al, a lot transcript in the upper left-hand corner of the Zoom screen. Uh, a window will open and it gives you uh subtitles. Um, if you need to ask a question, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself. Um, I think that's basically about it. So. We called it to order. Uh, gentlemen, I'd like to ask if you could approve the minutes of the Ju- June 4th. Regular Board of Selectmen's Meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 4th, 2020 regular Selectmen's Meeting.
Be- before we vote, could I make a, could I make a suggestion that we, that we amend this just slightly?
Sure.
Okay, um, the registrar voters wanted, wanted us to realize that what they're actually, to clarify this, what they're actually doing is the Secretary of the State is sending an, a request for an absentee ballot to every registered Democrat and Republican voter. And then the person that, that they want to participate in this, they can do it in one of three ways. They can mail it back to the Secretary of the State in the, a provided postage-paid envelope. They can bring it to the town hall and drop it off in a special box, or they can to return the application in person. And I'm not sure what that means, but that's, but, but that must mean at the town hall. But I don't know where else they would take it. So anyway, but it needs, needs us to point about the fact that, that the ballots, this is an application for a ballot. Once they get the application for the ballot, then, then they will send you the ballot and you can return them the same way. And what, what's happened here is that the registrar voters had requested a statement to this effect on the website and Crystal Adams of your office, Jake, wrote this up. And this is um, what's on the website that probably ought to be reflected in the minutes. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, yeah, it is on the town Facebook page and it's also on the town website under registrar voters. Uh, and I, I'm, you, I, we furnish that to all of the select because so that you're aware of it.
Yep.
So, okay, in addition to that, um, could I hear a motion to uh accept, please?
Motion to accept as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Can I, can I ask a question about that, please? Why is it just Democrat and Republican voters?
Cause that's all they can vote in a primary.
Okay, so this is just for the primary, not for?
Yeah, right, correct, correct. I, we assume that they probably would follow the same procedure for the general election, but we don't know that yet.
Okay, thank you.
The governor's current order uh expires on September 20th. So this for now will cover the primary in uh August. What's gonna happen beyond September? We don't know at this point.
Correct, agree.
Okay, um. I would like to, on the agenda, um, I'd like to welcome Dawn Adalata, who's basically gonna give us an overview. And gentlemen, I placed information from Dawn on the procedure in your folders, so you will see how the procedure works. Basically, she's gonna give us an overview of a open space project and preservation for Maple Crest Farm, which we all know about and we know where it is. But uh Dawn, I'd like to welcome you and thank you very much for uh, uh, being with us today and giving us an opportunity. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jay. This is Dawn Adalata, um, Chair of the Woodstock Open Space and Farmland Preservation Committee. And I'm here to discuss the most recent um, PDR project that the town would be involved in, which would be the purchase of the development rights of Maple Crest Farm, which is located between Roots 169, the east side of 169, and um Child Hill Road. It's known commonly as part of the Frink Farm, but it's actually been owned by the Young family for a number of years now. The Youngs applied for um, the PDR program a long time ago, and the state has finally moved forward and um, made Tim and Co. an offer in March, which he accepted. And the state has finally filed the appropriate paperwork, which means it's our job now to move forward. Um, I outlined the normal steps for you all. Chan, of course, knows how this works because he's part of the committee and this is not his first project. But um, to catch other people up to date, we will go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have a statutory obligation to approve this project. We will go before the Board of Finance uh Committee, or the Board, rather, and they will um, recommend that the already designated funds be released for this. We will go before the Conservation Commission, um, and they will affirm that this project uh adheres to the town's plan of conservation and development. And we will go to the Agricultural Committee, um, so that they can okay it, um, just because we're nice and they work so hard and they get to do it too. Um, your official job doesn't come till after all that happens. And at which case then, after all these other boards, committees, and commissions have done what they're required to do, then we will ask you um, to, we will recommend that this project go forward to town meeting and then it will be your job to set a town meeting. I like to come to the Board of Selectmen first before I go to all those other committees so that you're not reading about this in somebody else's minutes. You guys run the town, you should hear about it first. So as soon as we could start making it public, I asked to be placed on your agenda. Um, you can see there in your file, and I'm gonna leave you for a second here. Um, that it is, um, the, the property has 140 acres, um, 80% of which is prime soil. So again, it's good, it's very good land, it's good farmland. Um, the cost to the town would not exceed $65,000. That money is already set aside in the open space fund, um, so it would not be an increase to the budget. Once again, these are designated funds and this type of project is the only thing these funds may be spent on. So we're not asking the town to figure out how to come up with money that you haven't already budgeted, allotted for, and planned for. Um, I don't know if you have any specific questions for me that I'd be happy to try to answer.
Just trying to get the, the actual location. It's on Route 169.
Do you, do you know, um, do you know which farm is the Frink Farm?
No.
Okay, um, uh, it's uh.
North of the Christmas Barn.
I'm sorry, I can't, Chan, do you want it to tell them?
Oh, north, north of the Christmas Barn.
Yeah.
The next, the next farm, right there.
Okay.
It's got some walls around it and it says Maple Crest in the roof of the barn.
Gotcha.
Gray, is an old gray uh, uh, horse that's in the field all the time you go by it.
You're right, but, but I want to clarify, that portion of the historical Maple Crest Farm still belongs to the Frink family and that portion of the farm is not being considered for protection. It's an additional 140 acres of land, some of which fronts on 169, most of which um, is interior land and butts up against the current Valley Side Farm. Um, the, in order to keep things clear, the, the Youngs are retaining the historic name of the, the parcel and are continuing to call it on all of their paperwork, including their deeds as Maple Crest Farm. So it's, it's not the barn, it's not the old house, it's not the land immediately adjacent that usually has the horse on it. All of that still belongs to the Frink family and that is not being considered for protection at this point.
Is the property that's all down in back of that, that also reflects their other property on Child Hill Road?
It butts the Youngs' property, yes. And you can see that, you can see that on the map that I sent you. There's an outline of the parcel that's being considered and you can see Route 169 and you can see Child Hill Road. Um, so it's, it's clear, but it's important to me, if you can't, guys can't figure this map out, we'll have to add some extra maps so that everybody knows, understands what's going on. This, I gave you copies of the map that the State Department of Agriculture created for their project and their paperwork.
I, I um, did a little homework today and I got a map from uh Christine French in, in the uh Town Clerk's Office, which is clearer, it's, it's more of a sight map, it's not colored. But I, as soon as I looked at it, I said, oh, I know where this is.
Okay.
I said, I knew the property was down behind it.
I don't know, uh, uh, excuse me, Jay, I'm sorry. Um, I, I don't know if that particular map shows the division that was made um, when the Frinks split up the property and sold part of it to the Youngs, which is why I didn't use that one. I know that the map that Connecticut DOAG forwarded with the agreement is an accurate map.
Okay.
But it, but, but at least you know where the property is now that you've looked at, at Christine's map.
I know where you mean.
You got, you got it, Greg.
Know where to me. On the, on the lower left-hand corner of the map, it looks like there's a road. Is that 169?
Let, let me pull up the map so I can see it too.
Colored map.
Uh, yes, I know, but I need to pull it up on my.
Right.
On the lower left.
What, Jay?
You're correct. That is 169, lower left. It kind of cuts off.
Yeah, all right, okay. Then, then I have a question and may, maybe it's a, this, this might be hypothetical way down in the future, but what would be the, if somebody wanted to purchase this property that, in, in the future for farming, right? It's all it can be used for. They wanted to purchase it. What would be the access if they, if they didn't, couldn't go through the Frink farm land?
Um, it has its own access on 169, so because it is a separate parcel, you're, this is actually a very good question because it is a separate parcel, um, that means it would not be a subdivision. And should, in the future, the Young family choose to sell this Maple Crest parcel for farming, which is the only thing it could be used for, um, they would be able legally to do that. Um, the restrictions would still apply, but there's a direct access on 169 to this, to this piece of property. So if you were to buy it, Greg, you, you would have your own exit, uh, uh, access, rather. You wouldn't have to go through, through Tim and Wendy's property.
Or the Frinks.
Or the Frinks, correct.
Okay, good. Good answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm very pleased to see this is moving forward.
Me too, as you know.
Dawn, you put in a great deal of work on every one of these projects, countless number of hours, and I just wanted to say thanks.
Well, thank you, Chan. As you know, cause you sit on the committee, there's a, a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that goes on, a lot of um, hand-holding and, and, and quiet prodding. Um, and it's everybody on the committee that works. It, it's a good group of, of people.
Does it, does it tell in here how, how much the um, state is paying the, for the rights?
Um, it does not say in that document, um, but there, um, I believe it's 2,229 total.
2,000?
200,000.
200,000.
Yeah, but let me pull up the correct, the whole document so I'm giving you the right number.
And that's what goes to the owners?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Um, yes, their, their, their offer um, is approximately 200, 229,000 dollars. It is, of course, contingent upon a final survey that's not done um, until later in the process. So the exact amount, um, we, we don't know, but that's, that's what, what they're estimating it will be on a plus or minus 140-acre site. And we, the town pays 25% of that, that total. That's where we're getting the 65,000. And that's rounded up in case they find that they've really got 155 acres or something like that, so that we don't have to come back to the town. We just always round up for the ask. It will, the town will probably pay closer to 55,000. Which, um, and you will have a couple of weeks now, or a month and a half at least, to, to ponder this, um, means that we're not required to go to referendum for this because we're well below the $100,000 cutoff point as to whether or not we're required to have a town meeting or a referendum. Um, normally, you know, back in the olden days when we had a normal, um, after going to all the committees, um, we would set a date for either a town meeting or a referendum. The Open Space Committee would make a presentation. People would come, people would hear, they would either vote there that day or retire to vote on referendum. And then that would be fine. Um, now, things are not as clear as to how the best, safest, and most appropriate way is to have a, a town vote. Um, I like as many people as possible to be able to vote in this, to come hear us. And that's, um, that's a puzzle how that's going to all unwrap this year. The good news, if there is good news, is that um, Celebrating Agriculture is doing a different format this year. So as opposed to the normal setup where we, where the Open Space Committee would set up its booth and one of us would spend the day chatting with people and we could feature this, this farm as our project. Um, they're asking us, Celebrating Ag is asking each um, normal Celebrating Ag participant to create a small video saying why agriculture is important and what your group is doing about it. Which means that we can talk about the value of protecting agricultural land in our community, the role agricultural land plays in the whole state, and we can have a video that will be playing, hopefully, the entire month of September. And we can direct people to that link so that they can see that presentation that we normally make once right before the vote. They can see it over and over and over again. Um, and then the vote can be scheduled um, for some time in October. Again, because it's, um, it doesn't require a referendum, we can just do a town meeting, which means that we can talk about this a lot more than we normally could if it was a referendum. I spoke with uh Judy Wahlberg about whether or not this vote could be attached to the upcoming November vote. She said absolutely not. You have to move heaven and earth to get a local municipal issue on a federal or state ballot, so don't even bother going that way. So we need to figure out how to do a regular vote.
Dawn, that's something I've talked to the, the town attorney about.
Yeah.
I've talked previously about this. And he also, uh, since he's a rich Roberts, the town attorney is very involved in creating the executive orders for the governor.
Okay.
He's mentioned, so uh, I told him about this situation. And as you said, it's a puzzle. It's, it's up in the air now, but I'm hoping, uh, because there are things that uh, maybe could be skipped under executive order, but I would prefer not to because there are things that I think are important for uh, citizens to hear. So he's aware of the situation. We'll just have to see how things move forward.
Okay. Okay, um, yes, and, and again, I, you know, I understand that, that new crises require new actions, but I, I, I would prefer the townspeople having the opportunity to vote. We've supported these kinds of things overwhelmingly in the past. Um, and I am feeling pretty comfortable, everybody likes Angela's yogurt. I'm feeling pretty comfortable that this one will, will do well as the others have. Um, but um, I, I, I'd just like to have people have the opportunity to, to weigh in and, and to actually cast a ballot in one form or another.
I understand.
So if we can, we can Zoom for a thousand people, and that would be an awful lot of voters.
We could do that. We do have the capability of doing that. So uh, again, we'll have to see how this plays out, but we do have the capability of, I believe it's up to a thousand in a Zoom uh, format, if you will.
Yes.
Um, I, you know, I just wanted you to know that Chan, having been down this road before, um, and Greg and I are kind of the new kids on the block. And I, and I appreciate you coming to us first because usually you come to us last. But the information you gave to me, which I shared with Greg, uh, is helpful to us. And I, you know, I, I can speak for us, I think, and say that you have our support uh, even before you go to other, other organizations or groups.
Terrific. Thank, thank you, Jay. Thank you, Greg. And I know, thank you, Chan.
Welcome.
And gentlemen, do you have any more questions for, for uh, Dawn about, about this situation specific? No? Okay. All right, thank you, Dawn. If you, if you want to hang around a little bit, only because there'll be other citizen questions later on relative to this.
Yeah, I'll just re-mute and, um, but I'll stay until the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Um, okay. Uh, gentlemen, I'd like to reconsider, or consider rather, the reappointments of members of the Crystal Pond Park Commission for the term of July 1 of this year through June 30th of 2022. Uh, those folks are Brian Griffin as a full member, Paul Azalzuski as a full member, and David Mullin as a few member, full member. What is your pleasure?
I move we appoint them.
Reappoint.
Reappoint, yeah.
All right, thank you. Unanimous. Uh, number five, tax rebates. Once again, we have none. Uh, correspondence and announcements. Um, I have a few things here. I've got the monthly report for May from the State Police, um, investigations and, and other things they've done. Uh, in Woodstock during May, there were two accidents, five investigations, no burglaries, no larcenies. Uh, non-reportable matters, those are kind of the mine, and they answer with a phone, you know, if there's a phone call, there were 110. Uh, DUIs, zero, traffic citations, eight, and written warnings, 14. So, pretty good month overall in town. Um, I also have um, from the Northeast Department of Health, a letter to us. Um, they set their budget for the 2021 year. Uh, based on that budget, the per capita rate has increased from $5.25 to $5.75, so it's gone up 50 cents ahead. We are charged uh, per uh, population. And our population has gone from 7809 to 7862. Uh, so our uh, per capita payments due to the health department would be uh, two equal installments of $22,603.25. Uh, and that's due in August 15. Um, they do a lot of services for us and it's not really, it's just an FYI because we don't have a choice whether or not we pay the bill.
Jay?
Yeah?
Excuse me, I have a question on that. The letter that they sent you says, says our population, and something's wrong here, has decreased from 7809 to 7862. Which do they mean? Did it increase? Did it decrease?
Well, it, it looks like a typo to me, but I will make sure that we don't pay any more than we should.
Right. If it was, if it was.
Decreased from, so it's either, uh, it was increased, those numbers, or decreased and they used the wrong numbers.
Exactly. So, so it might be less. Okay.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we had a gathering of uh, individuals on the common last Sunday. Uh, it was a demonstration that was organized by seniors at the academy. Uh, it was supposed to be on the main common. Uh, I contacted Troop D, I contacted uh, budding neighbors uh, around the common just to advise them what was going on. I was in frequent contact with Craig Rich, who's Director of Security for the academy. I was in contact with the headmaster, uh, members of the church, the pink house, and uh, uh, the owners of the White House, Matt, uh, the, the White House between the cemetery and the, um, the academy. Um, and I got, this came in in the morning. It's just an email from Sergeant, the Master Sergeant McDonald. Uh, he just said, just an update on today's demonstration. Troop D will be monitoring the event to ensure it means peaceful. Notifications would make to the appropriate personnel in the event they need more resources. Uh, two troopers were assigned to the event. Um, and I knew about that because we had requested it. Um, and it was just, thank you for working with us in anticipation, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So it went over very well. It was scheduled from 10 to 2. Uh, wide variety of people there, absolutely no problems. Uh, there were lining both sides of 169. Uh, there was some uh, music offered. There were a number of speakers. Um, and interesting enough, we're talking about First Amendment rights and that sort of thing. Um, our own registrar voters were there, had a table and a display set up and signed on a number, I believe it was at least eight, uh, folks signed up to uh, vote, registered to vote, and there were also a number of people that took the website so they could do it through email. So uh, overall, I think it was successful for everybody. Uh, no injuries, no, no problems at all. It's very, very low key. Um, let's see, what else do we have? That is it for correspondence. I do have announcements. Um. This was on Facebook and town webs, uh, Woodstock website. May 21st, we first came out and said that the whole thing with the beach, we were monitoring it and we were talking to the Department of Health, we were talking to DEP, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. As you may or may not know, it's become a real bone of contention because the coastal beaches along the shore have, they never closed. They were open and there were lifeguards there. It appears now, all inland state parks, the parks are open. However, the water fronts are closed. And what's confusing to people, and I'm getting emails and phone calls, as is the Selectmen's Office, is people don't seem to understand, the park is open, the beach is closed. They assume the park is open, everything's open. It's not true. Uh, we've been getting complaints that people were swimming at Nash Market. That may be true, but Nash Market, the park is open, the waterfront's closed. Same thing in Quay. Anyway, in our intent to be responsive to the needs of the community, uh, we're well aware, it's 15 feet space between beach blankets, six feet between unrelated people. Uh, we're planning on opening the beach on June 26th. It's been open all along because people have been using it. Now, uh, on the weekend, the 27th and 28th, we're gonna have uh, constables there from 10 a.m. until 4 p.m. They're gonna be checking for A, out-of-town people coming in, and B, uh, proper uh, physical distance between individuals and between families. They will only be there for the weekends. Uh, there are signs in place about social distancing. Um, there will not be a courtified, and that's created some issues too. However, the issues which people do not understand. However, the issues which people do not understand is because having a porta potty has to be sanitized each time someone uses it. We do not have the resources to do that, so we're not going to provide a porta potty. So folks, before they go to the beach, you know, it's sort of like when you were a kid, your parents were taking you. Okay, before we get in the car, let's go to the bathroom. That's going to be the same thing at the beach. All right? We're asking people to check the town of Woodstock and Woodstock rec Facebook pages. We're making arrangements now for trash pickup because there was an incident, not an incident, somebody freaked, most of us went there and just checked it out. Apparently, a large amount of trash was found there at one time and sent through picked up. So we're making arrangements to have appropriate trash containers there. There will not be tables there. The issue with the tables is, again, sanitizing. And I know that a number of the state parks have picked up the tables or have put signs out, you're not allowed to use the tables, because they cannot be sanitized. So basically, it's just going to be, the beach is open. We also have-
Jay, excuse me.
Yes?
I missed, were you talking about our pond factory or are you talking about state parks?
Both.
So our-
The state parks are open.
Right.
The waterfront in those state parks is closed.
I got you.
Okay.
But you're saying that Pond Factory Beach is going to be open?
Yes.
Good. I'm sure there's a lot of people happy to hear that. What about, what about Crystal Pond Park?
That will remain closed.
Right.
Now, the signs are over there and it says, "Beach closed to swimming." And after consulting with Chris Mayhew, who's chair of the commission, and Jackie Dubois, who's first selectman in Eastford, in fact, I was on the phone a long time with her yesterday. We, we decided to do that because the people use that area to launch canoes and kayaks, which is fine. The area that they use as a beach over there is so small. They're going to be on top of each other and we can't take responsibility for social distance. So Jackie's feeling is, we'll leave it open for launching boats, you know, canoes and kayaks. But she didn't want to get involved in social distancing. So as far as Crystal Pond is concerned, at the camp, the beach is closed to swimming and the sign says to swimming.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Yep. I'm sure there's a lot of, a lot of kids and parents alike out there that would be very happy to know that Pond Factory will be opening.
Yeah.
Has the water quality been checked up there yet, you know?
Yeah, well, I mentioned at the last meeting, we have a contract with a company and they don't have those mints.
Yep, yep.
Solitude.
Solitude, I believe is it's called. And they monitor the water up there and they put in material if they have to for weeds and other things. So yeah.
So June 26?
Yes, that's a Friday.
What, and what are the hours going to be technically?
Daylight.
Daylight to daylight, daylight to dusk. Yeah, okay.
The thing is, seriously, I'm not going up there at nine o'clock and tell people to get up.
Yep.
The constables will be there weekends from 10 a.m. until 4 p.m. But it's, it's basically during daylight hours. I mean, we don't have any, we've never had opening time and closing time. I think it might have been dawn to dusk or sunset, something like that.
But no lifeguards, right?
No.
Is there a sign, swim at your own risk?
I believe that's been there for a couple of years.
Okay.
Okay, the other thing is, gentlemen, or actually, everybody. We, there were a lot of changes in personnel at the town hall during the last administration where people went part-time and this sort of thing. And looking at the needs of the town and of the town hall, we advertised in-house for a part-time position for executive assistant in the office of the first selectman. We had no applicants for the part-time position. So we're doing an external, in fact, it came out, the Chaper's Guide today, or yesterday, depending upon when you get it, on page 13. And it's an immediate employment opportunity, full-time executive assistant. And people have to reply by Thursday, July 2 at 4 p.m. Basically, we're looking for a full-time position in that office.
Is that adding, adding a person in addition to Crystal and Brenda?
No, Brenda is part-time.
Okay.
So that position, executive assistant, will be full-time.
So it's Brenda's job to apply for?
We had met frequently. I intentionally put that into the budget for the next year. And I basically, I wanted her. She is extremely good at what she does. And it was offered to her. Unfortunately, she has another job, afternoons and evenings. And it's more of a, I'll say, a loyalty situation. She just, believe me, we've talked extensively about this, but she just didn't feel that she could leave the other position. And I said, "Is it possible that other position, higher, somebody else?" And I think for her, it was more loyalty to the individual that she works for. And again, it was, we've talked frequently over the last couple of months about this. And it came down to this, and I sat down again and I said, "We're going to have to make this a full-time position and, you know, how we were proceeding with this." She's been a part of this discussion throughout the whole thing. So unfortunately, what's going to happen down the road when this gets filled, we're going to have a full-time position there. And unfortunately, it's not going to be Brenda because she just doesn't feel that she can do it.
The budget that we have approved, is that salary for that position, that's going to reflect the full-time hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Salary and benefits.
Right, yeah.
The other thing, Greg, is, is people are going to be interviewed and depending upon their skills, their background, their experience, the salary is negotiable. But what you're asking is, yes, it was approved as part of the next budget that will start July 1.
Part of the plan. Sure. Okay. I'm with you.
Okay. What else did I got? Oh, Greg, I had about absentee ballots, but you already covered that. The other thing, and this just came out, Bentley Field, which is not ours, but we're just announcing it to the community. It's going to be reopened to the public on July 6. And the issue with that is similar to our issue with the beach. School's out. It's been a miserable school year. Teachers are burned out, kids are burned out, parents are burned out. Everybody's burned out. So anyway, they are taking an approach similar to us. We get calls every day, "When are you going to open Bentley?" And we politely tell them, "You're going to call the academy," because they don't, it belongs to the academy. A lot of folks use the track. We're either walking or running. A lot of folks use the tennis courts. So they made a decision just today, it's going to open June, July 6. The other thing is, because of the problems where it was closed originally, it will have locked gates. And those gates will be unlocked at 6 a.m. and they will be locked at 9 p.m. So that, once word gets out about that, I think people will be very happy. Because one of his lock issues that we were having in this general neighborhood, I was in touch with the state police, told them what was going on. They were very responsive. I called them this afternoon and explained to them what I just told you. It's going to be open on these dates and it will be locked and unavailable to the public during certain times.
Any news on Roseland Park? That they're only open weekday mornings, closed on the weekends?
No, Roseland went back to regular hours.
Right.
So they're open on weekends and they were open weekends, they're back to regular schedule. And I think that happened this week.
Okay.
So things will look enough. If we can just get a town meeting for Dawn, life would be good. We're opening up everything else.
All those other committees that have to deal with, with her, her proposal there, they can, they can meet on virtually, on Zoom.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Oh, absolutely. It's just she was concerned about having a town meeting.
Right, but to get, but, but to get to the town meeting, it's got to be approved, approved, approved along the way. All those hoops.
Honored. She came to us first. She could have left us for last, but no, she came to us first.
All right. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Gentlemen, do you have anything? Because I don't, that's, that's all I have for announcements and whatever.
I had my list of questions. You hit them all, Jay, so I'm set.
Okay. Greg, do you got anything?
Just bring up a, 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 an issue here that one of my colleagues has, has raised. And you may have seen this in, in, in the paper and all that. It's just with what's going on nationally on all the racism and, and, and police brutality stuff and all that, and what the march was about, or the rally was about at the academy and all that. It's just that he's, he has said, and these are good words, and I just want to repeat it, just that "The urge, all citizens of Woodstock, including our elected political leaders, to speak out against individual and structural racism and to work for the dignity and humanity of all our citizens." And, you know, I'm just throwing that out there right now. I don't expect you to do anything about it, but it would be nice if, as a board, board, that we could at some point issue a statement that, that endorsed that thought.
Greg, I have, I agree with you. I do have a personal opinion. Okay, I'd like to offer a personal opinion.
Go ahead.
This is not the board. And it doesn't even have to be in the mints. I don't, you know, it's your call. My opinion is this, I absolutely agree with you. I had reason to believe I was going to get a phone call about my feeling on behalf of the Board of Selectmen relative to what happened on Memorial Day, relative to what happened nationwide, relative to what's been going on. I never got the phone call and I'm just as glad. And I'll tell you why. One thing that makes me very angry is that there are issues in this country relative to racism, anti-feminism, all kinds of bad things. And what drives me personally crazy is people jumping on the bus to give a statement. Or if a camera comes out or a microphone comes out, well, the official, our official response is X. My thing is, if you do the right thing, if you do the ethical thing, if you do the moral thing, then you don't have to come out with a statement. But so many times nationwide, individuals and groups feel they have to come out with a statement. And that, that's my personal feeling because I was warned by somebody that I might get a phone call asking for, "What was the Board of Selectmen's response to this?" One of the speakers, and I, I don't know if any of you were there on Sunday. I was there, but I was not part of the demonstration, if you will. This, I found this out last night. One of the speakers that was speaking said, in an attempt to kind of stir things up, said, "Where is the first selectman? Where is members of the Board of Education? Where is members of the Board of Finance? And what is their reaction to what's going on in this country and why we're here today?" I found that out last night. But it's that type of attitude that we're supposed to come up with statements? I mean, if you do the right thing, you're moral, ethical, respect women, respect people of other cultures, other colors, other countries, then we don't have to have statements. So, and frankly, gentlemen, if, you know, I respect both of you. And if you feel that you want to come up with a statement on behalf of you individually or as a group, that's fine. Me personally, I don't want to come out with a statement by the Board of Selectmen. But again, personal opinion.
Are you thinking about drafting something, Greg?
I would. I, 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 but you know, Jay just had some, some great points. And I would think that if, if, if the Board of Selectmen came out with a pledge that to, and a challenge, I guess, to all citizens, to do exactly what he just said, to, to live our lives, to do the right thing, do the ethical thing and do the moral thing.
Why don't you ask me to do what I just said?
What?
If it's a good place, then you should be doing that anyway.
I didn't hear the beginning of what you said.
Why don't you ask people to do the right thing?
What? I can't hear you. Say that again.
I'm sorry. I'm, no, I'm saying, why shouldn't we ask people? Or why shouldn't we have a statement asking people to do the right thing?
Well, maybe we're not asking them. Maybe we're reminding them. You know, in light of all the situations out there, this is how we need, how we believe we should operate. That's all. All right. Look, if you don't, if you don't think this is something that we should delve into, then, then, you know, that would be your call.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm the first selectman, but I'm one of three. We're a team. And I'm not disagreeing. We are a team, the three of us.
Yes.
I know I, the responsibility rests with me, but we're a team. And as I said, I respect both of you guys. But I, I, I told you what I felt before about these people getting on the bandwagon to come out with a statement about something that's so obvious, you know, and I, I just-
Yeah, it's just-
Greg, listen, I'm, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. You have to understand.
Okay, no, I just brought it up as something that, that maybe we could think about how we could, how we could say that the talent of Woodstock through its Board of Selectmen also feels a certain way. And, 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 you know, you know, I'll, I'll write something up and share it with you guys and see what you think. And you can tear it, you can tear it to shreds if you want, or you can get back to me and let me know what you think.
When we took the oath, I became a selectman, we basically said exactly what we're talking about.
Say that again?
When we took an oath to be, to be selectman.
Yes.
We got sworn into office.
Yes.
We made, by agreeing to that, we did exactly what we're talking about. We supported the laws of the country.
The Constitution, the laws of the state, the laws of the country. Yeah.
Maybe it's simple as that. And people, and people can take it for what it is.
Okay.
All right, that's all. Yeah. I'll think about it.
Do we have anything else from, from the board?
No.
All set.
All set.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry?
Motion to adjourn?
No, no, no. Public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Diane has been sitting here. She's waving at me. Poor Diane's going to win us through this whole thing. Let's at least give her an opportunity to-
Thank you.
Say whatever.
I'm just changing the subject, but I, I spoke to Greg about this before you guys came on. In the town of Palmfort, they have some portable signs that indicate how fast you're traveling on certain roads. And on Closet Road, which is the extension of East Closet Road, they have one of those signs going north and one going south. So it's, sign says 30 miles an hour and then it records how fast you are going. And so this morning, I emailed to Maureen, who is the first selectwoman in Palmfort. And she indicated they've had them a long time. They moved them around town. And she indicated they've had them a long time, they moved them around town. And I don't believe there are any in Woodstock, but it would be nice to have them. And she said they cost about three thousand dollars apiece. I don't know how many they had, we didn't get into that. But uh, is speak, and looking at other towns, when we drive around and we see a sign that says thirty miles an hour and we're going thirty-five, then. I am unmuted.
I can hear.
Yeah, I, I can hear.
You can hear me?
Yep.
Oh.
Yes, I can.
Okay, so Jay couldn't hear me. But you understand what I'm sa, I don't know if he heard me at all then.
Right, right. Did you hear what she said, Jay?
Uh, I didn't.
You didn't, can you hear her now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I go through this all again? He didn't hear anything? Well, maybe I'll just call him. I mean, you guys heard what I said. So I will contact him in, by telephone and discuss this issue. Would that be okay?
Fine.
Fine, sure. And I, and when, when Diane and I discussed this prior to the meeting, I, I said to her, you know, how much do they cost, and she gave me the number that Maureen told her. Um.
Your speed.
Uh, said, you know, maybe we could, maybe we could support that, something like that, with some, a tiny little sponsor sign on it, you know? Like, if you like Angela's yogurt, there's a good sponsor right there, Speed Trap brought to you by, I, Speed Trap. Speed Zone brought to you by Angela's Yogurt, something like that, you know?
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to bring up, because I've seen that several times. It was on Gary School Road, and the last I've seen it was on uh Closet Road in Pomfret. So if you're driving uh on Closet Road, you'll see it there, so you'll know what I'm talking about.
Sure.
I wonder if it's possible to borrow some from the state, if they have some available.
Yeah, I think those are the portable ones that you, they could be towed in a pop sub, and it says speed limit twenty-five, your speed thirty-five.
Yeah. They, they, these were not portable ones, these were uh stuck in the ground, so they must have been, they were not on wheels. I've seen the one on wheels, these were not on wheels. These were actually, uh, somebody made a hole and it was on a post in the ground.
Must be run by solar power?
Must be. Okay, that's all.
Yeah. Also, also interesting too, on that score, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Alright, is that, is that some of the roads where, where these signs would be beneficial um, don't have a lot of space on the side for that, that kind of thing too, so.
Okay.
That, they're hooked right, they're, they're hooked right to the thirty mile an hour speed limit sign that's already posted on the ground.
Alright.
I'm sure in Woodstock, there must be some places like that.
Okay, sure, yeah, okay, alright, alright, that's a good idea.
Um, anything else, Diane or Dawn?
There's another person on.
Who's Beulah? Somebody named Beulah.
Other person on, uh, I can't see them, but apparently there's someone there. If there's somebody else that would like to speak, uh, please indicate.
I don't think so, I'm trying to unmute them, but.
We're trying to unmute you from here, uh, wherever the person is, I don't, it must be on a phone.
Or they can chat, use the chat box.
If you wanna use the chat in the bottom center of your screen, you can send an email to the group. No. Okay. Um, okay, and apparently, we're not gonna hear from that person. Is, is there anything else that anybody would like to uh bring up?
No, sir.
Okay, Jim, we'll go with uh, um.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Yeah? Okay, thank you, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.